Call our meeting to order. Tonight, our invocation will be provided by Councilman David Moore.
Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we do thank you again for this time that we're able to spend together, Lord. We thank you for our town. We thank you for our citizens, this council, our mayor, Lord, our staff, Lord. We're just so blessed to be in this city, Lord. Continue to be with us tonight during our meeting and help guide us and direct us in the decisions that we make, Lord. We ask all these things in your precious and heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next is set the agenda. We do have one change to the agenda presentation from Better City. Will have to be taken off. They had some airline issues trying to get here, so we will not have that. Are there any other changes? Here, none on entertaining motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mr. Craig, second by Mr. Meadows. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. We have five items on the consent agenda. Are there any questions? Here, none on entertaining motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Shoemaker, second by Ms. Polish. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Next on the agenda is presentation of salary study. Becky, and I may not get that right. Droats?
Droats.
Droats, okay. Well, with my last name, nobody pronounces it right, so I get it. I understand. Alexis, are you, okay. I think Alexis Hill is going to introduce you, and then we'll go from there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this year, the salary study was performed by Becky Droats. We hired her this year for that, and she is here to present to that.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here this evening and inviting me to attend. It was actually last year. We've been at this process for well over a year now and looking at the market study. What I'd like to do tonight is just give you brief information about myself and then talk about the methodology for the study, what was done, and how we got to where we are, and then we'll go from there. As far as my background, I have been working in human resources and compensation for more than 20 years. I have a bachelor's degree from the University of Illinois and my master's in business administration from Marymount University. I am a certified compensation professional, as well as holding two senior certifications in human resources. I have done work with a variety of different clients, including some other government and quasi-government organizations as well. So let's talk about the actual study that we did here. So it really starts with job descriptions. So it's not really about titles. Titles can be misleading. Typically, in a government organization, they tend to be a little bit more straightforward, so it does make it a little bit easier. But it's really important to understand that we're really looking at what are we asking people to do, what kinds of responsibilities do they have, as well as what types of minimum requirements are set for that job. The reason that we do that is because, again, we don't want to go out and just look by titles. We really want to look by the essential functions of those jobs. So once I have an understanding of what the jobs do based on those job descriptions and communication with HR, if there were any questions, then it's collecting market data. So where does the data come from? There are several different sources. The first one that we used was the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And for that particular study, since the city participates, they have reciprocity, so I was asked to include that one in the results for this group as well. So that is the first one. And with that group, of course, it's municipalities across North Carolina. And we looked at the data cut that represented cities or counties that had 10,000 to 25,000 citizens. The next survey source that we looked at was the Catapult North Carolina Wage and Salary Survey. Catapult is an employers' association, and actually, this work began with Catapult. But we use the Catapult North Carolina Wage and Salary Survey also to collect good North Carolina information. This one's a little bit more limited in the number of matches that you'll have, but where we do have matches based on those job descriptions, that was pulled as well. The next source is Economic Research Institute, or ERI, and the last source is Comp Analyst. So ERI and Comp Analyst are very robust data sources. These are subscription sources that are constantly being added and updated. All of these sources are employer-reported data. So this is not crowdsourced, somebody off the street saying, "Here's a job, here's what I make." This is all employer-validated information. With those different surveys, they present the data in different ways, so we can look at different data cuts when we're looking at that survey. So we're looking predominantly across the Charlotte metro region. And typically, that's going to be defined by the Department of Labor region, so you would have Charlotte, Gastonia, Rock Hills, so some of those northern parts of South Carolina, that the Department of Labor would look at as a commutable distance. So that's how the area is defined. So we're looking at Charlotte metro for the geography across the surveys, with the exception of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, because, of course, those could be in different areas. When looking at the data, I looked at government or public administration in some of them, and some we looked at not for profit if there wasn't a specific area to government. And for some organizations, or, excuse me, some positions, we actually looked at data across all industries. And the reason for that is that while you may choose to pay at a certain point, there are some positions where it may be more competitive. If you think about your maintenance technicians or some of your landscape folks, things like that, some of those roles, you're really competing against all industries. Those are jobs that might exist in government as well as others. And so it was really a mix. We went through each job looking to make sure that we were looking at the scope that most accurately reflected what was desired. When I look at data, there are a lot of different statistical measures. The one that I like to use is the median or the 50th percentile. So that means that in all of these surveys, when we pull a job and we're looking at that number, that median data represents the midpoint, where half of salaries reported are below and half of salaries that are reported are above. I prefer this to any type of average or weighted average, because it's not going to be skewed by outliers. So if you have an organization that truly is paying really high or really low, if we look at an average, that can sometimes have an influence. But in this case, we use median to help combat that. Now, I will say, with the League of Municipalities survey, they don't report a median, and so for that survey, I did use weighted average. And so that weighted average, that means that, on average, that's what an employee is paid for that job. Generally, median for all the others. With the different positions, if there was a match based on the roles and responsibilities, it was included in the survey. If that survey didn't have a match, then there wasn't anything pulled for that one. So it could have been anywhere from one to four matches for each position, and that data is averaged together, blended together to create the market average. So that's where the data is coming from. Once we have the data, the next thing to do is to create a structure. And so we created a salary structure that has various grades with ranges that include a range minimum, a range midpoint, and a range maximum. And so the structure is really created based on the midpoint, because we want to be aligned to market. We don't want to be overpaying, we don't want to be underpaying. So the midpoint of the grade system is really set up so that the jobs, we're looking at that market average, and we're looking at the midpoint of that structure. And that's how we're figuring out where we're going to assign jobs. Now, with the structure itself, it ranges from grades 51 to 62, and there is a 15% midpoint-to-midpoint spread. So that means from one grade to the next, that midpoint increases by 15%. And that's a consistent 15% throughout the structure. Then, from that midpoint, a range minimum and a range maximum are calculated. So the minimum is 20% less than midpoint, and the range maximum is 20% greater than midpoint. There are two exceptions where we made some edits in the structure. The first being on the minimum, on the lowest level job at grade 51. For that level, we had a desire to start at a $15-an-hour minimum, so we wouldn't have anything below that. So the minimum is established so that the structure reflects a $15-an-hour minimum. Now, the higher end isn't adjusted up. We're still working with that market data and using a calculated field so that we're not going higher than the market would actually suggest. The other area where there's an actual adjustment based on the calculation is that we have an entry rate for police and fire that's a little bit higher. So one of the challenges early on in the conversation was that it's really hard to recruit for some of those roles. And when we looked at the data, when we look at those roles, we decided to increase that starting rate to stay competitive for fire and police. Once that structure was in place, then we went through the process of looking at the market data, and again, really looking to align the market averages with the midpoints of those structures. So those midpoints represent a fully competent employee who's able to fully execute on the job, they know what they need to do, they're able to do it. Whereas employees who are on the lower end might be somebody who's newer to a role, they don't have a lot of experience, maybe they've recently been promoted, and so they're learning the steps for that job. So that's where you would have somebody on the lower end of a range typically. The flip side of that would be, of course, on the higher end, where you have your real subject matter experts, your real rock stars, people that would be higher in the range. So that's where you have that cap on the higher end. What we did, because we also had some concerns then about compression, so we looked at that data. We've got the data, we've got the structure, now we've assigned the jobs. Now, there's some concern about where should employees be placed in those ranges. And so we used a method where employees who were here within the city for less than 15 years, they were given basically 1% credit against the range minimum. And employees who had been here for more than 15 years were given 1.5% credit against the minimum. So what we did is we started, if we have a job, let's say it's a grade, I'll say it's a grade 52, the minimum is basically $34,000 on that grade. So if we had an employee who had been here for two years, we said if we started at that $34,000, and they got 2% per year, or 2% at, two years at 1%, so starting at that minimum, if they've been here two years, they got 1% for each year, that's how we determined where somebody would be placed in the range.
Can Ms. Shoemaker?
So you just said years in service to the city in general, but your slide says years in job.
In the job.
So someone who just received a promotion could actually, they would lose the percentages that they had earned in the previous position that they'd had? So if someone was in a job for like 15 years, they were at the minimum plus 15%, they got a raise, and maybe their raise wasn't that substantial?
If they, if they had a promotion, then they should technically be moving to a different grade. And so now that they're in a new grade, their promotions should still allow for them to have some kind of reflection of, you know, reward for that increase. But now that they're in a new grade, there's a higher minimum, so they should be placed appropriately based on that job. So with the structure, you have the range, that plus or minus 20%. So for some jobs, you might, you might not grow. There might not be another step. And so you want to have room in the range, that's why we did the plus or minus 20%. But then you also do have positions where you have promotion and you have escalation, and so that's where then you have the opportunity to bump up, and you would be lower in that next range, but it's a higher-paying range. So with that calculation, that was really based in, yes, thank you for correcting me, on the time, in that job. And so we looked at some different options, and those were the numbers that were selected as far as range placement. And so we calculated again from the minimum of the range, time and job.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When you say "we," is it your firm?
No.
Who is the "we" when you say "we"?
So throughout the process, I had many, many meetings with human resources as well as finance. Early on, the previous city manager was involved as well, so different folks at different times, consistently HR was involved. So when these decisions are made, you know, pulling the data, I'm providing that information and sharing it, but even at that stage, the information was shared along with the job descriptions for validation. And so same thing with looking at the salary structure, and when the grades were assigned based on which job should be in which grade, every point of that process was reviewed with the city.
When you say "with the city," it was reviewed with human resources?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Meadows?
Who in human resources?
Hannah.
Hannah, is that what you said?
Yes, Hannah.
Ms. Shoemaker?
Sorry, just a question. Earlier, you were mentioning how people were identified to be in the range, like low, medium, high, and you talked about like skills and experience and performance. And then here, you're talking about it really just being strictly years in the job. So is it a combination of the two, or is it just years in the job?
In this calculation, it is just service.
Okay, so there is no, nothing else? It's just years of service in the job that determines where you fall in the range?
Correct. And ideally, my recommendation would be to have performance data and then evaluate where an employee should be based on performance. In my conversations with HR, it was deemed that that was really not feasible for various different reasons. But yes, I would say performance should absolutely be what's determining placement. But for purposes of this study and in conversations with human resources, we used strictly time.
So just a clarification on that. Your recommendation was to use performance, but human resources indicated that would not be appropriate at this time?
My understanding was that there's not great data, and of course, if we're going to use performance, we're going to have good data to make reliable decisions.
Are you, are you going to talk about time in a position at another city entity and specifically, I mean, we could use fire and police, which is most common. I spent eight years at the city of Gastonia, now I've spent eight years in the city of Mount Holly, I have 16 years. Is that something you're going to address in a moment?
No. So with that previous credit that was not taken into consideration in the purpose of the study, my, again, understanding is that at a hiring point, if somebody came in and they had previous time, then they may be, you know, already properly placed. And so we did not look at any type of credit for previous work experience. It was strictly calculated in this purpose from range minimum and then the time in that job.
In your experience, is that a flawed way to do it? Because the resulting, the result is flawed. It's absolutely horrendous, what has happened in the compression, and especially the police department, and others, that have resulted based on people with 20-plus years of experience and somebody right behind them with 10 years of experience making equal or more than they are. I mean, there's something wrong in the methodology or the application if this is the case. Mr. Meadows?
Yeah, and I would say my understanding too is that with, with ranges, and I know these are new ranges, but that there were already some established guides, so if somebody was brought in, there was typically a fairly narrow range where somebody was brought in. If everybody came in at the same starting point, then this works, but no, I don't know where people were brought in when they were hired into their positions.
Mr. Meadows?
I'm not sure where to start. Were achievements considered? So a lot of folks have gone and gotten a master's degree, have gotten professional certifications, or even gotten a degree. Let's start with those. Were those even considered in the mix here as well? Because I started here at X, because what I think you just told me is that, "Well, we took care of you when you came in the door." Well, what if I'm not the same animal now that I was when, that I am now?
Yet, we had some conversation about that throughout the process and a couple of different things. So one, depending on the education or the certifications, it is, is it something that's nice to have, or is it something that is a minimum qualification for the role? And so in looking at that, it sounded that people either had it because you had to have it in order to do that job. You couldn't get hired into that position without having it, and then the others were in the nice-to-have category. So along with performance, yes, I think that it would be good to look at some of those additional certifications, and that's where some of the range placement ideally would come in, but no, that is not what was done.
May I ask a follow-up? Just a follow-up, because I know he's collecting his thoughts over that. Who is providing information on whether or not it was pertinent to the job? Was it, say, in the police department, was it the chief of police, or was it Hannah?
It was Hannah. My communication was predominantly with Hannah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Meadows?
So you mentioned promotions. So if I'm in an off-year and I get a promotion, and now I go into the next year with only a minor bump because of our internal policy, which I know isn't yours, but I'd like staff to put that on their list, I don't think that our current internal promotion policy is quite right in that I'm capped at 5% period to get promoted. And quite frankly, if somebody came in off the street with the same credentials, they could get paid more. I think that's wrong. I don't think that should be done to our employees. They're our best resource, they would provide all of our services, and I don't think that's quite right. So, but to continue down that road. So if I got a promotion the year off from the salary study, I got a meager bump, and then if I stayed at my old job, I got a better bump. Did anybody look at any of that?
We did not have conversation about promotion practices.
Would it have been your direction to?
My recommendation would be that when you have promotion, that you're getting to at least the minimum of the range. So there could be a variation. Certainly, you might have a set number for what a promotion is absolutely going to include, but we did not talk about promotion activities.
Could we just add that as another tick point for something that needs to be evaluated by a salary study, is what we're actually doing in practice to make sure it's what we need to be doing? Mr. Meadows?
So what I'm beginning to see a picture of is that I can work very hard in my career, I can go above and beyond, get extra education, formal and specific to my trade, and that could be used to promote me, but then when I get into the next position, "Oh, you've only been in that for a moment, and I get really no compensation for all that hard work and time that I put in." Something about that doesn't seem, seems foul to me. That doesn't seem right, that we, I guess a question, I'm not 100% certain, but don't we have programs here where we encourage people to go back to school and pay for it? We have tuition reimbursement, that kind of thing. We have professional development. I'm sorry, this isn't really for you, this is for some of the heads not in it. So do we have tuition reimbursement? Do we have professional development? Do we pay for that? Mr. Dupont, I guess, wants to come answer.
Yes, sir. Yes, that we do have those programs in place, and we fund those through department head requests through the annual budget process.
Okay. So I don't know if this is exactly right, but it feels to me like we encourage people to go out and get themselves well-educated and get to a point where they can do the job the absolute best they can, which is evident by the level of service that we provide our citizens in about any area you want to name, but we're not compensating for it. I would call that, to quote our interim city manager, "an unintended consequence." And we seem to have a number of those going on here. I'm not even sure where to go next, but we ought to be rewarding people for having worked hard and advanced. You know, I'm at a loss, I'm not even real sure where to go.
Mr. Craig?
When was this incorporated? And was there a huge transition from what was done prior to what's done now?
I can't answer that question. The work that I did was completed around March of this year. And what has happened since then, I don't know.
Mr. Moore?
Just had a couple of questions, and I know you've been working on this for a long time, but why was the 3% the cost of living not added in first before the salary study? And the other question I have, did any of these pay grades go down, you know, for some different departments?
So a general wage increase was included. So we first looked at the calculation based on time in that job, and then we did look at the 3% cost of living that was added, and that's where then we looked for differences. As far as the grades, this is a new structure, so I can't answer if there was a decrease from what was in place previously.
Mr. Meadows?
Just don't come on that. I should get my bump for what I had before, before I jump to my next, in my opinion, not have it included, because that basically means I didn't get, you know, what I kind of earned from the last period, in my opinion. I think that's what you're pointing out. Were benefits considered in the market study information?
No. This is pure, purely compensation, base pay compensation.
If I go down the road to, you know, XYZ, I'll use trash hauler, and they pay 1550 and we pay 1550, but you have a raft of, you know, health insurance and life insurance and the like that comes with that, that wasn't considered in the mix?
Correct.
Maybe it'd be good to finish your presentation. I mean, because this, this is a rich present, I mean, this, that was a big slide, so.
Yeah, and this really is the bulk of it, you know, because from here, you know, it sounds like there's some additional work to do as far as range placement. You know, I'd be happy to say I do believe in the validity of the data, and I stand by the recommendations for the ranges. I think the issues now are in range placement for the employees. So as a future action, what I would say is, one, continue to look at equity internally, and I think that is part of the range placement conversation that can take into consideration certificates, additional education, if we want to look at previous time, certainly, you know, there might be a calculation for that. So as an additional action, I think looking at range placement is something that I would recommend. I would also say, as you have additional positions that open up, or if you see turnover in different areas, those are things that you want to look at outside of doing a full study. The other thing I will mention is that with the structure, the way that it was designed is set up so that it's, can be updated year over year. So as the city decides to make changes, it's set up so that if it's a couple percent increase that's added, that structure can be easily updated. So I think once you have a structure that you're, you feel confident in, it's something that is a living, breathing document. It's not, put it on a shelf and you're good for years, it's something that needs to be maintained on an annual basis.
So we need to fix what has taken place. That may be the understatement of the year. If we're going to fix people within ranges, is that going to be up to the city to determine, or is that something that you're going to provide with your firm?
So that is something that is outside of the scope of the initial work. Certainly, the city can sit down and look and say, if these are the ranges, where do we want people? If you would like to engage, certainly, I can make some recommendations onto how to consider performance in addition to time.
Well, not just performance, but background. I mean, that's significant. If I, you know, that, that compression that is caused is significant. You know, we have people that it's just not fair to, and we need to do something immediately to correct this issue. So, you know, I know our staff is going to be getting with you and others to determine the best foot forward, but I guess, I'm looking at the council, I think we're all in agreement here, that this needs to be done sooner rather than later, and we're not pointing the finger at you. What we're trying to determine is, you know, sometimes it's garbage in, garbage out. You know, you're only given enough information to do what you need to do, and was that all the information that was required? And were those decisions made in a vacuum by one person reflective of what the department heads would have wanted for their employees, or the city manager, interim city manager, assistant city manager, finance director, or anyone else in the city that could have provided input that would have been a better decision strategically for the city and its employees? So that's what we're trying to get at. Not only the fix, because we need that now, but we need a process that this doesn't happen ever again, where one person decides the fate of over 100 city employees. That's deplorable. Mr. Meadows?
Is it common in your practice for other cities to have an appeals process? I'm not necessarily saying where I can challenge it, but there seems to be some transparency issues that I'm, I come out of a government background, and I was able to easily go and pull up all the salary ranges, and I could see exactly what they were. When we went through a compensation study, kind of like the slide you had here, I could sit down and kind of mostly back into what the methodology was and get a general idea of where I might have fallen. That doesn't seem to be available. Is that, I guess, I don't know, there's a Danny or a Brian question, but if I'm just an employee, is there someplace I can go right now and pull up salary ranges without having to go ask anybody that's above me or HR or any of that? Can I just go look, find the information?
You should be. Yes, we should be able to do that and look that kind of information up, because it's public knowledge anyway, so yes.
So I guess maybe, so we should be able to, but can I right now?
Not right now.
Okay. So another piece of that, transparency is vital. I don't have to agree with the outcome, but I need to be able to do the methodology to get to the outcome and know exactly what is being applied to me and how it's impacting me. You know, I've got to know that. I've got to be able to figure that out on my own and without having to go ask somebody above me in a chain of command. So that's critical. One of the things that I'd like to focus on for a moment, if we can, is you've got a lot of experience working with other groups. Is it just the HR group that you typically work with, or do you typically work with a team?
It is a mix. It really varies by the organization or municipality. It is not uncommon to have other leaders present. I typically let the organization I'm working with drive that. You know, if they feel that they have the knowledge in a limited area to bring in, you know, a smaller group, then that's what we do. And I have others that open it up. So it's really a client decision.
Mr. Meadows?
I would encourage our staff to look very closely at creating a team, and it seems to me that the department heads should be able to go into this type of a process and have a list of exactly where are my employees today, where are they moving them to, because they're held accountable for their budgets. They should be able to look at that. We haven't talked about this today. Market data is great, but are you able to implement 100% of what the market rate is given any particular client's situation?
It depends on every client as well. Certainly, their decision based on their philosophy about where they want to pay is where we pull the data from. That's why I use median in this case with the intent to match the market. But certainly, there are some clients that might say, you know, "I want to be at 25th." They know that they're behind, or they want to be leading and be at 75th percentile.
What was the direction you were given?
To match the market, essentially, to be competitive with the market.
Okay. Mr. Meadows?
Were multiple budget options provided to staff to choose from?
So early on in the process, with some of the additional models, there were a couple there were a couple of different options that had different price tags. And so including looking at some different step models that had much greater price tags. And that was, there was not an appetite for that. So then we backed down a little bit. And then with looking at the percentages for the calculation as well, information was shared so that that could also be tweaked and edited. And kind of behind the scenes, the city could play with that and make a decision to say, what did they want that to look like?
Mr. Craig.
Did one person, like, shoot those different plans down or was that a group?
I would say it was a group. And some of those were pretty early on with the previous city manager. But again, there were multiple meetings throughout the process, then with human resources.
Mr. Craig.
I'd say also, it's more so for staff that we need to come up with some type of policy where one person can't dictate certain things without having it signed off by either a superior or a certain group of people.
I will say one thing. In speaking to Mr. Jackson, we talked about the process. And anytime we've ever had a consultant with the city, they always present the city council with options. Whether or not council decides to move forward with them or not is council decision. But they at least need the information to make that decision. Is that right, Mr. Jackson?
That's correct.
And this process did not follow the normal process and see what happens? There's a reason. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Craig.
Yeah, and also, because I kind of, back what Councilman Meadows was saying about, I guess, plans. My question was, is there like, going to be, was there bronze, silver, gold type of plan? Because like the mayor said, I'd love to be able to look at it, sign off on it, you know? Instead of a decision like that being made without our approval.
There were not plans designed in the sense that, you know, it's bronze, silver, et cetera. But many iterations did go back and forth in the data with the HR team.
Mr. Meadows, and then Ms. Schumaker, and then Mr. Moore.
Is it not typical for you to kind of look at the raw data and say, this is where it lands? And then to go through some sort of a process with your budget for the entity that you're working with to say, I can't afford that, I can't afford that? And then, you know, I believe the proper response to that is if I can't fit within the top-line budget, there's a shift all the way through. Because salary study typically goes up. It doesn't necessarily mean that it has to go up, depending on what else an entity has going on, right?
I was not given a set budget number.
So I would suggest to staff, that's a pretty critical piece to where, you know, we've got to be able to pay for what it is that we're going to do. And we've got to make sure it fits in. So you may need to adjust accordingly. Because market rate, kind of like, what's the revenue neutral concept? It's not revenue neutral, we all know that. And market rate is not necessarily market rate here. It's a market rate adjusted for what can actually be paid for by the entity is what it ends up being at the end of the day. That's a common practice. So to know that didn't happen is kind of disturbing. I don't know if I was clear on before, but a compensation team should involve all of our department heads. And they should be involved in making these decisions. Because who knows what's going on in the departments better than they do.
Ms. Schumaker.
Yeah, I kind of want to just take a quick step back to understand something a little bit. So in past rate studies, I remember a lot of the data that was presented to us was actually more about really truly what the market, like median, like the market average and what the set point should be, like the median set point should be. And you've mentioned several times that, you know, you were presenting plans. So was the scope of what you were working with, like, more of a, like, a change to the structure of our ranges?
So I did not adjust any pre-existing structure. I proposed a totally new structure.
That's what I was starting to understand.
Yes, and so that new structure was based on aligning pure market data to midpoints.
Yeah. Okay, so essentially, what has happened to an extent, or just completely, not to an extent, but we've implemented a brand-new system with not a lot of internal checks. So you provided us with a system that, like you said, I stand behind what I presented. Like, this is like tried and true, like, something that's worked for many, many, like, companies and entities. But maybe we fumbled as we tried to implement this. And we weren't like, I say we, but we weren't necessarily careful about how everyone fell into the process. Is that more or less your take on kind of what happened? So it's like, it's all new, and as we implemented, there was just some struggles.
I can't answer that because I.
Well, you didn't implement it.
Didn't see behind the curtain.
Yeah.
But yeah, you know, certainly the new ranges were presented, the new structure was presented, again, through coordination and conversation. And then with the range placement internally through discussion is where the decision was made to use percentages based on the job.
Do you feel like hearing some of the concerns that council has, that maybe some of the information that you gathered while making the plan, like, that maybe there should be some adjustments to that as well? I mean, like, I think with some of the concerns about compression and, not to say that what you present, like, obviously, like, what you did was of quality, I'm sure. But, you know, not having actually seen it, but I'm sure that what you did was of quality. But like, you know, somebody said, like, if you're given misinformation or like, information wasn't all accurate that you were handed, or maybe wasn't complete. Like, is that something that you feel in your professional opinion should be visited prior to trying to continue to implement? I don't, you know what I mean? I don't know how to phrase that exactly.
I would say those conversations happened. So when I presented data, you know, we definitely had back and forth. So there were, you know, revisions and changes along the way.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Moore.
And this is not so much for you, but this is something that we need to look at, just in my opinion. You know, we've got a lot of people out there that make less than $40,000, $38,000 a year. And, you know, we've stepped up on our police, our fire. And, you know, the people that, you know, say meter reader or mechanic assistant or solid street and solid waste worker, all those folks, they are vital to our city. And somehow, we need to, there's a lot of turnover there. And we need to somehow step up and, you know, give them, you know, all this is very confusing, what we're doing here. It is very confusing. And, you know, we could give those folks a $1,000 raise, a $2,000 raise, whatever it may be. There's something that we just need to talk about. But those folks are out there at 2:00 in the morning, in the freezing rain, fixing a water break. Or it's 100 degrees and it's raining sideways and they're out picking up garbage or whatever. Those folks are just as vital as anybody in this company, as Mr. Jackson would say. So that's just something that I think we should look at too, because we just need to step up all the way around.
Okay. I think we'd all agree with that. So I think, you know, when we passed the budget, the council felt really good that we had done a good thing. And it wasn't long after we passed the budget that we found out different. So hopefully, you get a flavor for where we are and where we need to go. One of the things that is troublesome is we have a number of grievances that Mr. Jackson and staff have to look at. And one of them that I'm aware of was salary was dropped $10,000 after being given $10,000. And it was taken away summarily by one person. And, you know, I just want to make sure staff has direction to fix those types of issues, which are egregious and really should never have happened, you know? Not getting into personnel who it is, but just in general, nobody should be treated that way by their pay. So I just want to make sure staff has clear direction from council on how to proceed on that. Is that, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, I understand.
Okay. Mr. Meadows.
To fall off a little bit on what Lauren was saying. If you've proposed an entirely different structure, some of the assumptions that were even shared this evening don't quite line up in that if I was hired under one system and now we've gone to a new system, what I did before really isn't being included, correct? If I got hired under system A and now we get measured by system B, you know, those aren't directly correlated because I've gone and collected new raw data over here and said, here's what I'm going to do now.
I would agree with that.
I think that we have, again, unintended consequences. And just kind of say this out loud, we're a policy board. And the fact that we're having to have this kind of conversation, I mean, something's seriously wrong. Because people know what the hierarchy is and are very good about following the hierarchy and doing what they're supposed to do. When they start reaching out to us, they've kind of thrown caution to the wind. And for me, that's a serious red flag, because our most important asset, again, is our employees. And when I've done that, that means that I'm not worried about being retained. I'm looking at leaving, you know? And we have critical positions and people that we hear a lot about, the Mount Holly Way, you know, in a lot of our different areas, about how we treat people, how we do things. We've deviated. And we need to get back on track in a hurry, because we're going to lose some good people if we don't. So I just want everybody to understand that we get it in that you are reaching out in a way that you normally wouldn't because, you know, you've kind of gotten a raw deal and it needs to be fixed. I mean, I don't know how else to say it, other than to tell the truth about it. So.
All right. So going from here. Huh?
I said, so what's next?
Yes. No, what's next is we get this fixed and we get it done immediately. So I guess, Mr. Jackson, what would be the next step? And what do you need from us?
Well, I think I have a direction that I need, Mr. Mayor and council. Obviously, we've got to react to this fairly quickly for the obvious reason. I needed to hear what you all had to say about it to give direction for staff. I think I have a good idea what needs to be done, and I can take it from here.
Okay.
Mr. Meadows.
So I don't know what the solution looks like. But at the very least, we probably need to have some educational sessions where we bring in the different departments. Like, you know, Councilmember Moore pointed out, this is complicated. Folks need to understand, you know, kind of what's happened to them. And then information needs to be available. I know we've got some very bright people in staff and we've got some ambassadors among staff that can comprehend what's going on. And it's kind of train the trainer. They can go out and share with other employees. And sometimes, you know, peer-to-peer exchange of information after it's been provided is very useful. Because at the very least, I hope, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm hoping that some of this is just misunderstanding. I don't know what happened to me. And the other part is, we just got it wrong, you know? So I'm hoping it's a combination. I hope it's not all we got it wrong.
Well, I think if you look at it from a balanced perspective, it was an increase of $650,000 in salaries. So there were a number of people who got increases. The problem exists because it caused compression and didn't take the other items into account. And those people need to be addressed, right? That, we addressed a good number of them. Because if you increase that much, then a number of people got increases in pay. So I would say that there are a number of people that need to be addressed, for sure. But we did address a lot of people. It's just others need to go up and be adjusted. Ms. Schumaker.
I also think it's really imperative, again, sorry, this is, we're just making you stand there.
It's okay.
Like, it's something that Jeff and I have tried to champion for several years now. But I do think it's imperative for our employees to have a performance-based evaluation system. It's obvious that the number of years is not a very accurate metric when somebody could be promoted and be in a job for one year. I mean, and we've had conversations, like, do you want someone who's phoning it in and barely showing up to get the same increase as somebody who kills it and comes in at 2:00 AM and does whatever in the sideways rain? I mean, like, it's, are those things equivalent? And I realize that it's not always the easiest thing to implement. But, you know, having, you know, we've implemented, God, I've worked for the federal government for 20 years and my little corner of the world has gone through three different performance evaluation systems in those 20 years. It's not easy, but it's, you implement and it's, you do. You know, you just say, this is what we're doing now. And, you know, it should provide metrics. And after year one, you know, you would have metrics that would help the stellar employees that we get to get compensation, not just, like, you could have incentives for all of the certifications and the hard work that they're putting in to improve themselves outside of the workplace. But also just be rewarded for the incredible work that they do. I think that that's, it's really important. And I don't think that our system should just be based on the number of years someone is in a single position. So.
Okay. Anything else?
We got y'all's back.
There you go.
But just know we're here behind you.
I just want to say I'm sorry that this happened. I'm embarrassed that we, as council, didn't know about it, you know?
Well, unfortunately, a lot of the staff didn't know about it.
I know. I apologize.
Majority of the staff.
Well, the two people who were involved are no longer going to be with the city. And we're going to move forward with a clear slate and we're going to do what's right. So.
Transparency.
Any questions, any concerns, continue to communicate. That's what we tell you.
And thank you for reaching out and letting us know.
Absolutely. Becky, thank you. Is Kenny Colbert still at the Employers Association?
No, he has retired and is living the good life.
Good for him. Good for him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.1183 and 5. Ms. Paulus, second by Ms. Harris. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. You went to put something in your mouth and that's all I saw. So I saw a raised hand.